I, I work in them schools sometimes. If you would go to the elementary schools, you would see our students struggling emotionally, educationally, and in several ways socially. So, I ask you, put a hold on any money that could be spent on this change. You've made it, whatever, stop spending money on it. And put it towards our students and put it towards hiring some of those teachers assistants back. How can you look at yourself in the mirror and say that it's okay to, to pay for a mascot that most of the community didn't want changed and not support our students? You talk about equity. You talk about how you want the people who come to this community with no means to get the best education, and yet you're taking away the things that they need most, money, teachers assistants. Please, stop spending our, our tax dollars foolishly and put it towards our students. Thank you.
Amanda Bailey, 50, Washington Drive. Thank you for your steady leadership during one of the hardest years in education. And I hope the people who are so passionate about the previous issue that was mentioned, stick around for the rest of the conversation tonight when we talk about things like district goals, leadership, superintendent performance, all the important things that matter when we're running our district, supporting our students, our staff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to members of the public. Next item on the agenda is our superintendent's update. Peter.
Great. So, thank you, Adam. I do not have a traditional superintendent's update for you tonight, knowing that the agenda is very long. I want to keep us moving. I just want to maybe, I think there might be a misconception about spending money in terms of, you know, making the change of the mascot, so I just want to correct that for the record. We did not budget any additional funds beyond the school district's regular operating requests for changing the mascot. That continues to be the case. When we do talk that changing the mascot will cost money, every year we replace uniforms on a regular schedule and we'll continue to replace those uniforms. The difference will be they will just no longer say Colonials, they will now have the new moniker, Revolution. So, you know, we know that that's the case. We know there are a couple of big ticket items, like the gym floor at the high school or the new curtain in the gym. We have no plan to change those anytime soon. There are easy things to change, like names on scoreboards, things like that. So, also certainly proceed to change because, you talked to JD about this, they're actually just aluminum placards that you change out and then you can make that change relatively easy. So, you know, we'll, we'll look at below hanging fruit first and things that we can do within the regular operating budget, but there is no connection between the change of the mascot and funding being reduced in other areas for first of all. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear for the community and, you know, clear any misconceptions around that. So, second one, just along that line, I don't know if you saw recently in the news, but Georgia Washington University just made news, they chose to retire their mascot, which was the Colonials. You know, I know Marie, I think your kids went there, so I think you got the news first. You know, I know that, you know, there'll be certainly other members of our community who are there as well, who will, that will resonate for it. You know, that certainly, you know, their rationale in doing it was very consistent with the rationale in our community as well. So, I just wanted to share that with you as well. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I can't do this item on the superintendent's update, but I can do the one after that. So...
I have too many, yeah. Beth, you gave me all this paper tonight. This was the plan. Beth knows I don't like paper. I do everything digitally, as does Adam, but tonight she filled me up with paper all over the place. And also, I do want to note that Beth posted an incorrect version of the agenda. The corrected version, she seems to have edited, which was her recognition for all of her service to the district. We had that in our last version of the agenda and then mysteriously that disappeared. So, I know you tried hard for that, Beth, but there's no chance you're escaping that. So, if, I could have you come up to the front for a minute, please.
Hold on just a second, Beth, there's, there's more. So, the school committee as well has a little thank you gift.
So, I don't know if all of you are aware just how long Beth has served this community, but it's been long before she even was the assistant to the school committee and superintendent. She had been Douglas PTO president, I believe, right? She has worked in all sorts of things around the district community. She gives tirelessly to this role. And I can't tell you as a school committee just how passionate she is about serving you as committee members. And, you know, the idea of, you know, her and her position being able to give service to the volunteers in our community who are helping to lead, she has the utmost appreciation for just how hard your job is, how challenging it is to try and, you know, navigate a community with very high expectations. And just, you know, Beth, you do your job such, you know, wisdom, grace, expertise every day. I certainly, you know, I'm finishing my fourth year here. I couldn't have been successful for more than a day and a half if it weren't for everything Beth did and all the guidance she gave, all the corrections she gives me to like open meeting processes and everything else because, you know, as you all know, she's expert. So, Beth, thank you so much for everything you've done. Marie, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but I would certainly offer you the opportunity. But congratulations, Beth, on your retirement. You'll be sorely missed. Right. I...
I guess, are there any other comments from the committee regarding Beth? Thanks.
I mean, Beth, you're amazing. Okay, we'll make this quick. I'll make it quick. You're amazing. You are, you and I, one year, were on the phone three, four times every single day and you were just so supportive of some, of a tough time. So, thank you so much. And, you know, I, I really appreciate it. You clearly care. You clearly care a lot about this district and about us as school committee members. And I'm sorry I don't always respond to your texts.
So, Beth, you got me through two years of being chair. Lots of people said like, oh my God, I don't know how you do it. Well, like, the answer was, like, that is how I did it. Beth always orders me gluten-free snacks whenever we're like having committee luncheons and things. She always checks in with me and says, well, they have this and this and this and they can make you something else. And I won't say that you made two years of chair a pleasure, but I will say you really helped make it bearable and helped me get through it. And I don't know what new chairs will do without your handholding, always having a pen. Look, I brought two tonight. No, it's not. You have the same one. Because, Beth, you are so thoughtful in every way and you think of every single detail and you apologize needlessly all the time for things that don't need to be apologized for because honestly, you make, you are a part of what makes being on the committee so special. So, thank you.
I'll round out at least the group of people in the room who've served as chair and had the pleasure to work with you as, as chair. And, you know, I want to thank you for your unlimited knowledge of processes, procedures, and just when it needs to be a roll call vote versus a, a executive session item and, and all of that. I think that your skill and understanding of the process of the school committee work is amazing and I'm really grateful for your support in that. And I look forward to continuing to at least have you in the room with us each night as you only have to take minutes in the future.
Thank you, Beth. You know, I've held several jobs in my life, but I've never had such great onboarding. Like, when I got on the school committee, like, I felt like some executive somewhere, like, everything was done for us. And so, thank you for your grace and your kindness and all the text message reminders. You did not do this or do that. Thank you so much. And we'll miss you, but it makes me feel better that we'll have you here at least for school committee meetings. And we love you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Beth, thank you so much for your, your tireless work on the school committee or with the school committee. I can speak in saying that I'm one of those individuals who gets a ton of text messages and I may not necessarily respond in time with all the craziness and meetings going on during the day for me. But I do know that every single message I do read, every single message, I try to respond back within a reasonable amount of time. But if it wasn't for your dedication and steadfast to that role of supporting this committee, I don't think any one of us here could be as successful as we could be without your, your support. So, thank you.
And Beth, it's my turn now. I want to thank you for your humor, your knowledge, the fact that you put up with all of us and me. And you show such grace and decorum when dealing with a lot of other folks who are far more selfish than you are. Thank you for being selfless, being self-aware, being you. You've made this group. Thank you.
You, you do have to go to a microphone though, if you want to say something to us. Do you know how to turn it on?
Thank you all so much. It really, it means so much to me and it's weird to be on the receiving end of, you know. But I've so often said to Peter and other people, one of my favorite parts of this job is to be supporting you all. I mean, you're volunteers, you have families, you have jobs, you're busy, busy people and here you are, you know, dedicating a significant amount of time and energy away from jobs and family and everything else to better our family, our kids, their education, the whole community. So, I really, it's, I consider it an honor to, to serve you all. So, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
All right. The second person, we just want to take a moment and recognize Adam Klein, served as the chair for the last year. Adam, it's been a pleasure working with you. Very much appreciated all of your guidance and insight over the course of the year. And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. What do you mean, that card you are surreptitiously passing around? I won't open the, the present, I should note that it's an Avengers superhero wrapping paper. Thank you all very much. Okay. Six minutes behind, ongoing business. So, first item on our ongoing business agenda is the preliminary input on the FBI 23 district goals and central office reorganization. So, you should have at your table a document and Peter will go through that with us and some of the reorganization plans that he has for the central office. Peter, Adam?
Adam, can I interrupt for a second? Sorry. I think Peter was going to make one more introduction. Julie's here, we're going to introduce her.
We introduced her already. See, there's this agenda that Beth gives us that's very clearly laid out in order of what we're supposed to say.
So, we're short a microphone, so it feels like I'm a bit in a karaoke situation or something like that. So, my apologies. Hopefully the mic is working if I speak like this. Is that the case? Yes, you can hear? Okay. So, what I wanted to do, and I apologize, I could not be with you. I was kind of forced out of the action for our last meeting, but I'm back now, so that's exciting. I wanted to share with you some thoughts around goals. If you remember back during the budget process, and even, actually even back to last September, one of the requests from the school committee was to reconsider the timeline with which we set goals as a school district and to think about getting goals set earlier. Now, there's only so early that you can push goal setting because you need to be able to kind of assess where your district is as you approach the end of a year before you can figure out what you're doing for the following year. So, you know, you can only go so early in that process. But during the budget process, we actually shared with you some of our intentions around what we wanted to continue for the work so that that was included in the budget process. It included a lot of the current work that we were trying to do, but also included a renewed focus on social emotional learning and really looking at launching a major initiative around social emotional learning, mental health and behavioral health supports for students. So, since that budget process and since, you know, you adopted the budget and then it was passed by the pounds, we've been working as a leadership team to start to refine those ideas. But what we wanted to do was bring them to you in draft form and get some feedback from you before we now go back into the summer and work on them even more as a leadership team. I will say, there's been significant work done on these. There's a lot of planning and there's our action steps that certainly already are in motion because if they weren't in motion now, they would be ready for fall. But there's also similarly room for refinement of these and an opportunity to hone some of the goals before we go into next year. So, I put print copies, or actually Beth put some print copies of these on your table and I'm separating them out into two things. As you recall from my reflection on the year, six goals was way too many for us as a school district. It meant that we weren't focused and we weren't really able to go deep to the level that we were impacting students in the way we wanted to. When we set too many goals, it also sends our educators and classrooms spinning because they just have too many things that they're trying to balance on top of really keeping focused on kids. So, what you're going to see tonight is really an effort to pare down the number of true goals that we're doing and I'm presenting to you three major goals. However, I will also share with you some information about some other initiatives that we'll continue to make progress on. They won't rise to the same level of work and effort as a traditional goal, but there'll certainly be time expended toward those initiatives. So, I'm going to jump over to that document. I'll also share it on the screen so that we're working off of a consistent copy. Is that large enough for people in the audience? Great. Okay. So, the first goal, and these are, you know, quite honestly, the first goal was the first goal because it needs to be our highest priority. It's in the area of social emotional learning, mental health and behavioral health. And the goal that we would like to set, our language that we have right now, is to improve social emotional, mental and behavioral health outcomes for students by shifting our environments, practices and supports so that students can more effectively access learning and cultivate constructive relationships. All right? So, it's really about improving the outcomes for our kids around, you know, social emotional learning, but mental health and behavioral health also specifically. You know, if you have read the recent Surgeon General's report, right now they're estimating that about 45% of adolescents could be diagnosed with a mental health disorder. That is a sharp increase of about threefold over what we had seen pre-pandemic levels. We're not immune from that at Acton Boxbury, but we're seeing it as young as kindergarten and preschool and certainly as old as 12th grade in our schools. And we want to think deeply and systemically about how we can work around that and provide some supports. In terms of how it aligns with our district strategy, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but it essentially is that fourth major area around social emotional learning on the district strategy. It's the area that we really had yet to tap into as a school district. Despite our best efforts, I think we would have, had the pandemic not hit, we would have been further along, but we just couldn't get to everything during the pandemic. But we certainly need to focus on it now. I'm including also here, I'll just highlight it for you, because a part of our work around social emotional learning is actually also around restorative practices in the schools. And so, this actually falls under more of the equity indicator if you look at the district strategy, but we're including it here as a line it because it's part of this work. One of the outputs that you will see out of the school district to get to the improved student outcomes is an aligned system of support across a multi-tiered system. So, the work we're doing, we've talked about MTSS throughout the year, all of the work we're doing around SEL, we have aligned with the MTSS model so that it's a tiered system of support so that for educators, students and families, it makes sense how we're structuring our supports in our schools. And that was really important to keep a consistent model. And so, we want to make sure that we have resources, structures and instruction to meet the range of social emotional, behavioral and mental health needs of all students. It's important to understand that even though we're seeing an acute spike in mental health needs among students, that doesn't mean every student has that need. Every student has a slightly different need and it's important to have a range of supports and services to meet those needs. In terms of measures of success, we may not use all of these or we may add some, but I want to give you some samples of what we're thinking of to measure our, our work by. We would like to improve student attendance nationally and at AB, student attendance has been a major concern this year. We're seeing more students who are chronically absent, even though the, you know, metric for chronically absent has almost doubled by state reporting standards. We're still seeing students chronically absent, missing 20% or more of their, their school year, which is significant. We need to think about how we can support them. We have a very, very high number of nurse visits over the course of this year for non-medical concerns. We would like to also reduce our disciplinary referrals that go into offices. We would like to look at some of the data from that initial Panerena screamer, screener, screamer, and be able to think about how we can positively impact student outcomes there. And then really, you know, we need to also rely on our staff and the anecdotal data that they provide us about what they're seeing in kids. Data is not just a set of numbers. Data is also about all the perceptions of staff and families and all of the people who know kids. So, we want to be thinking deeply about that. We have not set benchmarks yet because we wanted to bring the goal to you in its early stages and then, you know, get some feedback today. But the goal, our goal would be that over the summer, we'll actually send some benchmarks for how we want to see things improve from our current baseline data and then be able to come back to you in the fall with more of a sense of, and here's what specifically we want to see the improvement or growth over the course of the year be.
I have a quick question for you, Peter. Do you want to take comments and questions on each goal item as you go through it or do you want to go through all of them and then take questions?
I can take comments as we go. Let me just jump to one thing because I want to show you an example of what we mean by a multi-tiered system of supports and how that aligns over the course of it. We have a similar presentation on the academic side of our support system as well that Deb has been working on. This is something that, just to share a little bit about, we've, we've developed. So, this is a goal that I just shared with you. The outcome is improved social emotional, mental and behavioral health outcomes for kids. The output is the aligned system of support and the data sources are what I just shared with you. All right. This is how we're thinking of our work next year. I know it's a little bit busy, but you have three main domains. You have an academic domain in the background, you have social emotional domain and a behavioral domain. And within that, you have three different tiers of support. That's really what we're looking at when we talk about this. Typically, the green tier, which is the universal support tier, all students receive everything in the universal support tier. That's for everyone. That's the, the baseline. That's the baseline of what the instructional program looks like. In tier two, students who need additional support typically fall into about 15 to 20% of students and then about 1 to 5% of students would typically require supports in tier three. All right, and this is not special education. I want to make that really clear because I know Amanda's behind me. So just to, you know, give a little summary to this. So in tier one, all students receive tier one instruction from educators, including classroom teachers, counselors, psychologists and other staff all year long. Students have equitable access to evidence-based, universally designed academic behavioral and social emotional curriculum instruction that integrates culturally sustaining linguistically appropriate pedagogy. Instruction is aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks and driven by the five pillars of the Castle Standards, the collaborative for academic, social and emotional learning, and promotes the development through explicit curricula along with instructional practices that are integrated throughout students' days. Most students are going to be successful with good quality tier one instruction. That's what we expect. So things that we're doing in tier one, this is how we're organizing. We use responsive classroom as an approach at the elementary level. We are also revamping and re-envisioning advisories in grades seven through 12 that will meet significantly more frequently than they're meeting currently. We are really working with educators and our principals at the beginning of the year to have really clear and consistent behavioral expectations for students and, you know, understood responses that students should be able to expect. We talk about the integration of S E L into academic learning. We are, I'll focus on this, trauma sensitive approaches. We're partnering with Leslie University next year on a two-pronged approach to make our schools trauma sensitive schools. The high school has a number of different initiatives and I'll talk about those also, but K eight, all of our schools are committing to working deeply on becoming trauma sensitive schools. And what that means, we have two things happening. We have worked with Leslie University to develop core professional learning. That's the equivalent of eight hours of focus for educators on trauma sensitivity and trauma in the classroom over the course of the first semester. That's really understanding the nature of trauma, looking at classroom approaches to be able to help manage trauma and educator responses to trauma, looking at how we can work together as school communities to better be responsive to the needs of students who have experienced trauma. And then the second approach that we're taking is to offer a series of graduate courses through Leslie University right here at Acton Boxborough for our educators. And they can take a series of five courses over the equivalent of five semesters. There are three grad credits each. They can largely use their course reimbursement that's included in the contract. But the first course is a full 30-hour graduate course in the nature of trauma. The second course is 30 hours on classroom approaches. Then there's 30 hours on school-wide approaches to trauma. And then there's an action research project that educators complete in their school setting. And then the fifth course Leslie just launched was on the impact of race and racism and trauma. So that's something that also aligns with all of our work around culturally responsive practices, so we're very excited to be able to offer that to our educators. That will be a long-term approach. I will say there's been a high, high level of interest from educators. When Leslie originally agreed to partner with us on this, they said that they, you know, you open the window in the spring and then they typically leave the course registration window open until fall. As long as they get 20 educators in a cohort, then they'll run the course for you on campus. Within 12 hours, we sold out 25 seats to our educators. And then we went back to Leslie University, were able to work with them, and ultimately they agreed to give us a second cohort of 25 seats, which then sold out in another 12 hours. So we have 50 educators also on a waitlist who will take that same first level course in second semester of next year. So within the first year, we'll actually have about 20% of our teaching force having gone through that first graduate level coursework on trauma, so we're pretty excited about that. In terms of, you know, staff, we want to make sure that we're also supporting staff in looking at this. And I just talked about that Leslie University partnership, which is the Lifts Program, the Leslie Institute for Trauma Sensitivity. But we also want to enhance consultation with our psychologists and counselors around student cases that come up. We have Stuart Ablon, who's a nationally renowned speaker coming in on the Professional Learning Day to help tie all this together for educators. And then we also want to think about families in this process, and we have a number of different things. One, making sure families understand all the different expectations and the work that we're doing as a district. We have Lynn Lyons coming in, who's a renowned speaker on anxiety to do, you know, some parent workshops on anxiety for people. We also are partnering with an organization called Cartwheel, and I'll talk about that coming up. But they will be planning and executing a five-part series on mental health for families and working with us to identify those topics most of interest to our families to be able to do that. So we're working on that as well. As we get into tier two, this is now more targeted instruction, typically in smaller groups. I'm not going to go through all of these slides, don't worry because it would be here forever. But this is kind of now thinking about students who need additional support. So again, we're talking about maybe 15, 20% of students might receive some supports in tier two. And then we have a range of supports that we're also working on for students. I will share one thing that we're working toward, and it's going to actually span into tier three a little bit as well. You're going to hear the term cartwheel come up a number of times over the next year. Cartwheel is a startup organization. I was introduced to them by a colleague that I know at Harvard Business School. And they are looking to, they've developed an organization that's looking to fill the gap between the time we know students need mental health care and the waitlist, the sometimes six to eight to nine months of wait time before students can get in. So we've actually signed a contract with them now and we have essentially partnered with them to guarantee 3,600 hours of clinical care for our students. And from the time one of our counselors make, works with a family to make a referral into the system, they guarantee the initial assessment within seven days and an immediate start to counseling. It's done through teletherapy and they are a short-term provider, so they will do between six and 12 sessions per student, at which point most students graduate out of counseling. But if early in the process, they identify that a student needs continued care, they'll also facilitate the transition to more long-term therapy. So essentially what we're doing through this partnership is we're cutting out the waitlist for our students. It's not appropriate for the youngest students because they, it's a teletherapy service. So really it's, you know, fifth grade and up, but some fourth graders might very well be able to access it. It's only available from a referral through one of our counselors. It's not something that the general public can go sign up for, parents can't contact them directly. You know, they do short-term care, help with the transition to long-term care. They will work with us to plan a parent series around mental health. They match their counseling staff with the demographics of the community, which is also important to us. So they've been thinking deeply about that. We're really excited about the opportunity. It's a startup, so we, there's no one else to call for experience. As I said, there's, you know, we have this opportunity, it's worth exploring because if they can deliver about 75% of what they've said, then it will be a huge success for us. So we're excited about that. They do guarantee that all of their counselors and therapists are doctoral level or L I C S Ws, which is the highest level of certification in those fields. And we're, we're just excited to be able to provide that service for families. We have the William James Interface Program that we've had for several years, which is a referral service, but what we're finding is they actually closed for two months because they couldn't find counselors. This program will actually provide the counseling staff immediately for our students and families. They've shared that they can take probably about 50 new referrals every month over the course of the year. So that's, that's huge for us. So that is kind of the overview of Cartwheel. And you can see some of the professional development we have for staff, some of the different supports. But in all of the models, for each of the first, second and third tiers, what we're really thinking about is having supports for students, having supports for staff and having supports for families. And that was an important aspect for us in this planning. So that is kind of the overview of, kind of, I wanted to show you what that MTSS model looks like. I'm not going to go deeply into the academic side of it. Again, it's more just to give you a flavor of how we're thinking and how we're organizing our services and work and supports for kids. So with that said, before I do that, I just want to, you know, I want to thank a few people. I want to thank Heather Stauk, who's our elementary psychology coordinator. She had a lot of input into this, our mental health leadership team had input into this. All of our principals have had input into this planning process. It actually started with, I went and met with every school staff over the course of the spring and just listened to what they were, what they needed and what they identified as their highest needs. And quite honestly, social emotional needs and mental health and behavioral health came out as absolutely the top need and the biggest barrier that they're experiencing for kids being able to be successful. And so that really is what pushed us toward the trauma sensitivity program at Leslie and this focus, hyper-focus on social emotional learning for next year. So happy to take, you know, feedback and thoughts on this. I know it's just a really high level overview.
So at some point, once this cartwheel thing is started, will we get some regular updates on how it's going and whether it's beneficial to kids and staff?
Part of the contract is that they'll actually provide us the data.
So a couple of years ago, before COVID, we had a lot of discussion about how to keep some of our, I would say, tier three kids in a way out of partial hospitalization programs and whatnot, and we were looking at that whole thing. I don't even remember what the acronym was, but I still get emails from them. So is tier three sort of aimed at those kids? Is that like what we're thinking? I mean, to me, the tier three differentiated sort of supports don't look all that different than the tier two ones. So I'm just wondering, like, I know we had some of our counselors trained in D B T and, you know, is that kind of stuff going to continue on? Because that's what they're doing in mental health centers.
Yeah, that, that certainly continues on. And that's actually in, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to list every single type of evidence-based therapy that we use.
I know, I know way too much about this, so that's why I'm asking that question.
No, no.
But given that we, we had those presentations and that whole discussion happened before COVID, is, is tier three aimed, I guess that's my basic question, is tier three aimed at preventing the need for the hospital, as many hospitalizations?
Well, the, I don't want to say tier three, it's the whole system
Sure.
is designed to support students along that path, right? I think, you know, what, I'll, I'll point to the, the top bullet here on this slide, which is small group individualized targeted interventions with evidence-based data-driven, you know, methodologies, right? And that's where it's whether it's C B T, D B T, you know, depends on what the student needs, but certainly that's a key element of this. You know, I think what's hard is, you know, we want the whole system to keep students from needing to be hospitalized, but there's no guarantee that you can always prevent that. Just, you know, and I almost, with, I think the best analogy in my mind is to think about nursing services in a school, that there are times when students need medical attention in a school and we provide school nurses for that purpose. And there's a range of services our nurses can provide to students in a school setting, but then there are medical issues that require attention that's more acute beyond what a school nurse can provide. And that's why there's a transition between kind of school services and medical services. Same thing for mental health services, there needs to be kind of a seamless transition. I actually think Cartwheel is probably the closest thing to start that because it's the transition between school and kind of that private therapy, but trying to speed the time. I think, you know, what I think we're seeing as a major issue that we want to solve is, you know, when we know kids need mental health support, if they have to wait six months, that's probably the biggest trigger why students continue to decline. And so if we can provide immediate intervention through this program, I think that might be one of our best levers. So we did focus kind of on that short-term care solution in planning this. Sorry for the long answer, but that, it's complicated.
Other questions on this one? I, I have a, a comment and I guess it leads to a, maybe a suggestion as you go into planning for the summer, Peter. I think that the comment is, I really appreciate that this is the first goal and the first item because it's clear that this is, this is essentially getting the kids in the door and ready to learn. And so that's clearly the most important thing we need to do so that they can then access the material. My, my comment slash suggestion for the, the brainstorming session with the, with the team this summer is how do we, how do we benchmark quickly so that we can measure the success quickly? I think this goal and maybe we'll see it in some of the other ones too, they feel, they continue to feel very large. And what would be great is to say, you know, kind of, now that we've got I Ready in place where we can do an assessment at the beginning of the year, the middle year and the end of the year, we can measure that, those, those targets and the improvement over the course of the year. I think that's what I would sort of ask that you think about with the, with the leadership team is what, what are we going to do to benchmark or what do we have for data now to begin that assessment so that when we get through the middle of the year, we can assess if we're making the right choices and have put the right pieces in place so that we can adjust if need be, or by the time we get to the end of the year, we can actually see what is that? I, I'm reluctant to say measurement of success, but measurement of progress. Because I think that, you know, for the past few years, that's been one of our biggest challenges in our goals is there's, there's not a lot of like tangible, what was the baseline? And then how did we see that improvement at the end? And like we said, and you've seen probably in your evaluations, we're starting to get that in some of the academic areas. This one is still pretty early for us in terms of its development. So I think it would be great to see what the team's thoughts are around how to, how to baseline and then show progress throughout the year as opposed to saying, oh, we're going to take a whole year to base, and then we'll see progress in the following years.
No, I, I think, you know, we'll have baseline data going into the school year, so I'm not concerned about that. I think what, what I want to make sure I'm understanding, are you talking more like short-cycle goals where you're thinking in terms of like eight to 10-week segments? Or are you?
No, no, not, not that short of a period of time. I just think that, you know, as, as you bring this material back to us at the beginning of the year to say, okay, here's, maybe here's what the baseline is because we've already thought about that. And so, you know, that there's a, there's a very clear outcome here and there's some measurements of those successes. But I, you know, I think we'll want more quantitative measurements to look at, to have the baseline and then the measurement at mid-year, about mid-year, mid-year goal review and end-of-year goal review.
Right, so let me give you an example of what we're thinking. If we say, you know, improved student attendance, what we would come back to you with benchmarks for the fall would be, you know, look, last year we had, you know, X number of students who were chronically absent. We'd like to reduce that by 35% over the course of the year. And we're going to come back mid-year and look at progress that we've made and then we're going to be able to measure progress from mid-year to the end of the year as well. Is that kind of what you're thinking is?
Exactly, yeah. And like I said, I, it's, it's a comment only knowing that you haven't sat with the leadership team to think about those things yet. And I think that's sort of as you facilitate that conversation with them, to sort of lead and try to come up with some of those. Some of them are going to be qualitative, but some of them quantitative.
That, that's definitely where we're going.
Any other comments, feedback on goal number one?
I just want to say I really appreciate the focus on trauma because I think, like everybody, our, our students have been through collective trauma and every educator you talk to has stories about how, you know, what they've been dealing with. So I think that you can't, you can't move forward until you, you know, assess and deal with that. So I really appreciate the focus on that. Thank you.
Yeah, we've talked a lot about universal design over the last few years. You've heard UDL as an acronym multiple times in the committee level, and that's been a training that all of our educators have gone through. When we think about kind of social emotional learning, having a trauma-informed approach is very much kind of a universal design for learning on the social emotional side. So that's why we wanted to start with that as a foundation. So thank you.
Okay, so I recognize that this one was very important, but I also just want to point out it took us 30 minutes to get through that first one. So let's try to keep the, the introduction of this shorter and the questions pointed.
So for the next one, improved academic outcomes in literacy and mathematics for students in grades K eight with particular emphasis on students from underserved subgroups, including students who are Black, Latinx, multilingual learners and who receive special education services. This is there for a couple of reasons. A, it is really what we're aiming to do through our MTSS process. We did choose to hyper-focus on literacy and math, not because there's any statement that the other subjects aren't all important, right? We teach a wide range of subjects because everything is important for kids. However, what we do know about literacy and math is they're foundational building blocks for students for future success in school. And we do believe that the effects of the pandemic require focus on these at this point in time. We also know that where we've had the most disproportionate outcomes and where we were cited for the state for disproportionality was around some of the different performance of subgroups because we have not done what we need to do as a district to be able to serve all of our students in the manner that's equitable. So this is something we want to do. What, it, it's really, you know, we've been building this MTSS system for this purpose. Now we're kind of getting to the point where we're ready to try and commit as a district to seeing that bench move in the target. to seeing that bench move and the target move for kids. So what you would expect to see out of us, to, to go to Adam's previous point, is when we come back, we would actually set some targets that are disaggregated by subgroup for how we want to see students grow over the course of next year. So, you know, for example, you know, we might say, you know, we've been watching it this year and I think one of the measures we want to use is, is growth of students using the I Ready assessment. It's not because it's the only way we assess students, but it's an easier one to start with. But rather than focusing on achievement, by focusing on student growth, it means that all students should be growing, not just low performers, not just average performers, not just high performers. But by focusing on growth, you're actually really thinking about each student as an individual and how they can achieve appropriate growth over the course of the year. So we're leaning toward the growth measure as one. We also are looking at kind of our DIBELS literacy growth data as well for our early grades. We also have some classroom-based measures in mathematics such as, you know, the IM cooldowns, foundations unit assessments, and then we can also look at some NCAS data if we want kind of the post-mortem version of how we're measuring growth over years. So that's, that's something that we're looking at doing as well.
Comments, questions? I didn't mean to go from 30 minutes to 30 minutes, but so be it. If there are none, Peter, on to third goal.
And there is, you know, we can share the, the digital version of this document. I purposely didn't ahead of time because it requires an explanation. So we'll share this and then, you know, we have, as I mentioned, you know, Deb has been working on with her team, the similar tiered approach to the academic supports that we're providing that I shared with you previously. So we will have that in place for the fall as well. And in the last one, culturally responsive practices. So we want to improve student, staff, and family sense of belonging by strengthening school culture and climate, diversifying our professional staff, and intentionally implementing culturally responsive instructional practices and materials. All right. And so to clarify what that is, you know, this is aligned with all of the work around inclusive practices that is outlined in our strategy. And it, you know, the work we want to do actually hits a little bit on each of these where we're really looking to be very data-driven in the first two goals. Some of this goal will be data-driven and some is more in kind of the adaptive work that educators have to do. So I want to really acknowledge upfront that not everything in this goal is a quantifiable outcome similar to the other goals, and that's actually intentional. So a couple of things we want to do, we want to look at our core values again as a district. One thing we've noticed is of all the things that have happened over the last few years that have kind of really, you know, struck at the core values of the district, one thing that has, you know, been notable to me and some other members of the leadership team is it really strikes a kid's sense of belonging. And yet nothing in our core values actually says that we believe all students belong here and that belonging is really central to being part of the school system and being able to learn effectively. So we're looking at kind of honing those core values, maybe expanding them a little bit to include that idea of sense of belonging in addition to wellness, equity, and engagement. So that's something we're, we're looking at. We want, and this is, we've been planning for and we've budgeted for expanding teacher leadership for anti-bias and culturally responsive leadership across the district. That's in process. We have sustained and coordinated professional learning for culturally responsive practices at each school, and that's through that expanded teacher leadership. We are going to continue our recruitment and retention efforts for our educators of color. We are looking at an audit of our classroom and school library books and that came out of our curriculum study through the DEI Family Advisory that we want to undertake. So that's a direct result of some family feedback in the process that we received. We are going to really look at our curriculum to continue to highlight the narratives and storylines of marginalized populations within the curriculum, explore the development of a community welcome center in partnership with some other community organizations. We would like to create a central hub where families that are new to the community can come in and receive multi-language services. They can receive, you know, access to everything from social supports, rental assistance, school registration, and really, you know, be one central place for our families who are new to be able to understand how to become part of the community, learn about volunteer opportunities in the schools, and really just connect. So that's something that we've started some very, very initial planning for and want to take a more active role over the course of the year. And then we want to expand our family and community engagement with some of our district DEI initiatives as well. So some of the measures of success, we have started doing a school climate and culture survey this year. So that's going to actually provide a nice baseline of the data for how we can overall measure people's sense of connectedness. We may have a little work to do in order to be able to disaggregate that data so that we really understand and make sure all of our students and families feel connected. But we do have some baseline data at least to, to get going with. We want to actually set some benchmarks. We are thinking about setting a really hard target for, you know, by 2025, we want to have X percent of our staff be educators of color and just be really clear about the commitment to that. So that's something we'll come back to. And then we also, as a potential data source, want to use the biannual curriculum survey that was done by our DEI Family Advisory along with Deb's team that we can continue to come back to and use for, for, you know, kind of perception data about how we can continue to grow our work. Some benchmarks and improvement targets. So obviously a revised version of the core values. We want to increase the certified ages of color to 10% of our workforce by 2024. So that's kind of the metric that we're looking at. And then we want student, staff, family climate survey improvements. We have to figure out what the benchmark for that would be, but we'd like to set some targets around that as well.
Comments, questions, feedback on that? All right, I'm going to get started. So I'll start with, with the making part here, which is we sat around this room earlier this year and you heard from the committee for a commitment of a number of educators of color. And I know in follow-up meetings how scared the administration was of that because our recruitment efforts had not been so successful to date. And I think it is a huge, huge step to have that written on paper, Marie. It's on paper right here. So thank you. I think that's, that's an absolutely wonderful, it's, it's a wonderful improvement and benchmark to put down on paper, so I really appreciate that. The other comment I want to make is I'm excited about the opportunity to review the core values and beliefs of the district. And I think, you know, my feedback there is that we make sure that we get a real diverse set of community input. And by community, I mean, school community, greater community as a whole, as we, we come up with that core value and belief statement so that we really feel like not only does it represent the school community, which is obviously what it's there for, but also that the broader members of our community can look at that and, and have it resonate for them as well. Evelyn and then Tessa.
So thank you for bringing that up, Adam. I was going to ask, when are we going to get an update on the hiring for this year? At some point, I don't believe we got, we got an update yet for 2022, 2023, correct?
So I was not at the last meeting, but I think Marie may have given a preliminary update.
Hi. You missed it.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was.
But no, let me tell you. So I want to tell you, so, so far we've hired somewhere around 18 to 20 new educators. We've hired seven people of color so far and three of them are assistant principals. So, and you'll get a full report in September, once we have our, our hiring fully in place for next year. So you'll get the update in September, maybe late August, but so far we're pleased with how it's going.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, not at all. I was happy to share.
Is that it? Tessa?
I just want to say that I really like the idea of looking at our core values again. And I think that, at least in the time that I've been on the committee, we've had a hard time putting our finger on what it is that needs to be improved. There's like, you know, we have a lot of inequities in different areas and I think belonging sums it up a lot, at least in the experience that we've had. And I think that that sort of pulls everybody in, that idea of belonging. So I think that it's, it's really broad, but also really important to, to everybody, whether we're talking about staff or we're talking about students or we're talking about broader communities. So I give my thumbs up for that.
All right. Peter, do you want to talk briefly on some of the other initiatives that you've called out here?
Yeah. So again, I don't want to rise everything to the level of a major goal because the goals are going to require a lot of work and effort and time. But there are some other things that we're going to be doing next year as well. And so, you know, first, we are evaluating the course levels at the high school. We have made no decisions about the exact direction we're taking with respect to leveling. However, we do want to go through a process of evaluating that. And so that has been part of our district's strategy under a couple of areas and that work will be taking place at the high school next year. I've been talking with principal dean about a process to really engage the entire community in that discussion and not just have it. You know, I think when we talked about science this year, there were some members of the community that felt like the community engagement came late in the process. We want to make sure that we learn from that and really think about engaging with families early in the dialogue around course levels. But we do want to look at that because it really goes to how our students are moving through the system and who's getting access and who's not getting access. And what we really need to do is figure out what the false barriers we are that are, have that are in place and figure out how to remove some of those for kids to be able to achieve higher levels. So that's something we're going to be really taking a deep dive into. We want to explore the possibility of like a STEAM pathway that goes from kind of the junior high into the high school. I've started to reach out to some community and philanthropic groups and things like that about developing a superintendent STEAM advisory task force. You know, I think, you know, one thing we've learned over the last few years from kind of the student growth in attending Minute Man is that students are looking, some students in the district are really looking for something different than just the traditional pathway. And that's a really hands-on, rich, you know, kind of STEAM-oriented environment. I actually think our community would be primed for something around design thinking and looking at something that we could start maybe in the junior high, getting kids excited about, but they could continue on to high school. The state is about to release, I think in the governor's budget, a set of science lab kind of renovation grants for innovative purposes. And so we would like to be primed to be able to take advantage of those types of things. But I would really like to get our kids thinking about kind of design thinking, the intersection of that, entrepreneurship, being able to take products to market, and really being creative kind of entrepreneurs in this environment. I think that would be a great act in Boxborough Stamped. So we want to start thinking in that direction, so we'll be working on that next year as well. And then we also are going to be looking at the program Portrait of a Graduate. We'll probably start working with them during the second half of next year. It's actually part of what the high school needs to do for the accreditation process, but it's actually a community visioning process to think about kind of the overall outcomes for education that we want for kids. Not just in terms of, we want kids that can do math, science, social studies, but we want kids that are, I'm just going to throw out, you know, creative thinkers. We want problem solvers. Like what are the big skills that we want kids, you know, developing over their course of the time in the schools in addition to content knowledge? You never want to compromise content knowledge, you need it. But there have to be some bigger picture things in addition to content knowledge that are outcomes for kids. So that's something we will start as well. It's actually a requirement of high school accreditation processes now. So we're timing it to dovetail with what the high school is going through for accreditation, but I think we're going to approach it on a more community-wide scale.
Thank you. Amy?
So I am really excited about all of these three other initiatives. I will say especially the STEAM. I, I really, I believe strongly that it's well over the majority of our students would, would prefer some hands-on learning. I, I mean, I would even, like, talking about engagement, that, that's what's our students, that is what's going to bring engagement to our students. And thinking about what we want our students graduating with and, and really looking at what the traditional things that have been, have been, are, are, are part of the 21st century learners. And we are not in a world where traditional high school methods are going to be effective for where our students need to be in terms of creativity, compassionate, collaboration, all of the things that are going to be really important. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Peter. Likewise, I'm really excited about the STEAM program that is part and parcel of this plan. As you know, I work for the city of Somerville and in their public schools within the high school, they actually have a vocational school embedded within the high school in itself. And about a month and a half, two months ago, I actually took a tour of the high school, went down to the auto mechanic shop. And to see the students getting hands-on experience with technology with, you know, some of those aspects that a traditional high school may not offer, providing a program like STEAM will give those students that want the non-traditional route a sense of belonging and a sense of ownership of the program that they want to do. So I'm, I'm really excited to see this and, and take a little of that back here, so to speak.
Thank you for that. I, I want to say that I'm, while I'm excited about all of these, I, I hope that we will include the DEI Family Advisory Group and our CPAC group as we do these three initiatives. And I, while I'm excited about the STEAM pathway, I would say that I'm going to be really particularly looking to make sure that this does not become that alternative route that some students end up just getting shit into because, you know, for whatever reason, they, they, you know, they don't, they can't do the harder high school route. I just want to make sure that this doesn't turn into some pipeline or funnel that creams out students in that kind of way. So I hope that when we're, we're doing this exploration, that we're, we're very careful about how that's implemented.
Not the easiest mic to use. No, I, I appreciate that. I think that may be jumping several steps beyond any kind of planning that we have done because this is really an exploratory piece at this point. So I agree with you. You know, in, in all honesty, I think, you know, Mike, the closest area of experience to something like this I have is, you know, in the high school where I was a principal, we had an arts academy. And it was open to grade students in grades 10 through 12. It had students with a range of needs. It served students with disabilities. It had students who were in AP courses. We had students with disabilities who were in AP courses in, in that arts pathway. But it was really something where kids went in because they wanted an integrated approach to their education and they wanted to really be able to think deeply in a field. It's not an alternative pathway to the traditional high school education. So I'm not really interested in creating that kind of an alternative program. It's really about how do we, you know, enhance kind of the STEAM and design thinking aspects of what we already offer.
I just want to push back against what Kira said because Minute Man is not an easier, like less hard path. It's an alternative path. And so I really think that there is something we're totally missing in the high school because we have extraordinarily traditional program here and we are far less progressive than many other high, our, Somerville's not the only one that has a built-in vocational school. And it's not that it's easier or that the traditional path is harder, it's that it's different. And so I just want to make sure, I'm, I don't think that that's really what you intended, but it is what you said. So I just want to make sure that that's not what you meant.
Well, so it's not. And what I said was I don't want this to be some sort of thing where certain students are moved in a direction involuntarily. I, I don't think that that's okay. I think that kids can, can be, can choose and I think the kids choose Minute Man. It's not a critique about, about whether or not it's hard or it's easy. It's about making sure that kids are not funneled in a particular direction because someone has arbitrarily deems them unable to do X, Y, or Z. So as long as we avoid that, then I'm good.
Okay. I just want to say, first want to say bless. I did see the hand. There've been a couple of comments, they, they might be having some trouble with sound on YouTube. There was some earlier in the meeting and I saw that, and there's been some other messages. So this is being recorded and it's being broadcast on public access. So, this is being recorded and it's being broadcast on public access television for those people who are having challenges. Those who are having challenges obviously can't hear me give them the alternatives because they can't hear on YouTube, but just wanted to make that available. Rebecca, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to sort of bridge the gap between Kira and Tessa here and say that I think we do have to acknowledge there is a stigma about alternative pathways. And I absolutely support this move. I think Minuteman is fabulous. I think it would be great to retain those students rather than have them leave to go to Minuteman. I would love my kids to go to tech school, but this is a fact of life that there is a stigma that we should figure out a way to proactively work against.
Thank you. Peter, I have some comments and questions, given the conversation that we've had here and how you prefaced what you were presenting to us tonight and how we got to where we are now. So, we started the year, and you presented to us six options for goals and said, pick some. And the committee said to you, yes, please. And we ended up with all of them, and we ended up with a difficult time achieving all of them. And so, you've come to us with a very clear set of three goals, and then you've given us some other initiatives. So, my first question is to you, which is, what is, my question, I think, is actually in the form of a statement, which is, as you go back and think about the feedback you received tonight and work with the leadership team, I think it would be helpful to better define what your expectations are for these three initiatives so that the committee understands what to expect as the year goes on next year and doesn't take these as if they were three more goals that you're not necessarily committing to but have put on paper. So, I think that's, that's the feedback I have there. The question I have for the committee is, is three goals too few? Is it not enough? Is it too much? What's our feedback to Peter for that? Sure.
What you will expect of me when I come back, based on kind of the evaluation of the superintendent, I'll look at that and I'll think about a professional practice goal, about something in my own practice that I want to improve related to the evaluation. And so, when I come back to you with my own goals in the fall, you will see a student learning goal, which would either be goal one or goal two from this. You would see a professional practice goal related to what I want to improve based on the evaluation. And then you'll also see the other two goals. So, it's really, whatever, it's, it's actually four goals we're talking about. The professional practice one just hasn't been determined yet because you haven't done my evaluation, if that makes sense.
Thanks. Amy.
I do not think that three goals is too few or four. I think that every year we tend to get into this because we're a large committee and with very diverse views, that we do get into kind of wanting to put everything in the pot. And I appreciate you coming to us with, each one of these is really thick, lots of stuff to unpack and do. So, I would definitely say, do not add anymore.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Okay. I want to point out that these goals will also continue to drive budget decisions in the future. And so, when it comes budget time next year and Peter says, here's five things, pick two, and we again say, yes, please, you know, this is our opportunity now to say, these goals are aligned not only with what we're looking for the district to improve upon, but also where we're looking to focus our limited resources towards a budget season.
Takes me longer to turn the mic on than to actually provide a comment. Just real quick response for the previous comment, though, Adam, which was, you know, what's the difference, what should you expect as a committee around how we're going to treat our goals versus our initiatives? Roughly, and we'll clarify this, I would think with initiatives, you'll get some updates from me throughout the year on kind of progress we're making toward them, but they will not be nearly as formal. You're not going to see a significant amount of data that we're trying to generate around the initiatives. It's just kind of general updates to you about the work we're doing. Whereas with the goals, those are going to be rooted in the data that we see. And what are we trying to grow? What are we accountable to? What are we moving forward? So, that's kind of the general distinction that I'm seeing in my mind.
Great. Thank you. Any final comments or questions before we move on? We have a comment from the public?
Christine Russell, Old Lantern Road. I just wanted to comment real quick because I have three kids. My oldest went through the Acton-Boxborough school system. He had a great experience. He's in college and doing really well. My second, who chose Minuteman, and for them, AB comes across as success is defined by how many classes you can take at the highest level. And those classes being history, English, math, science, et cetera. And for them, the idea that the success could also equal learning a work skill or getting even a head start on college. They both go to Minuteman, they both do really well, they don't have IEPs, they do intend to go to college, and they're excited to already be pursuing skills that will make them not only a better college applicant, but if they change their minds, they could go right into the workforce. So, just a little, you know, rounded out view of why some kids choose that alternate path. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Could I just say that I did hear a lot of feedback and questions post our most recent graduation about how there didn't appear to be any students pursuing future plans other than college. So, the list of, you know, what's happening next year for students was 100% attending, you know, further schooling. So, you know, there were just questions of, could that really be true? Or are there other students doing other things? And if so, why are those things not being recognized and celebrated? So, I think, you know, that's just one example of how the traditional way of viewing things is still kind of the way we're doing it. And, you know, people are noticing, so we want to support and celebrate those students pursuing, you know, alternate paths as well.
That's a great point. Thank you, Jenny. Okay. I'm going to move us on to our next agenda item, which will be the approval of the ABRHS handbook changes. This is a second read. I believe we all had opportunities to get comments at our last meeting, and I also believe that there were no substantive changes since the last meeting. So, that being said, if there are no further comments, is there a motion to approve the notebook changes, the handbook changes?
Second.
I'm sorry. We do have some questions from the public, so before we do that, I'll invite the public up to make a comment.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, let me back to these. She's great. Thanks. So, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did listen to Joni Dean's presentation, and I had a couple of concerns, and I know that you've talked, you referred to one of the goals, you know, dealing with the chronic absenteeism. It sounded like one of her objectives or one of her solutions was to get rid of repercussions of being late, of being chronically tardy. And she said, oh, they have these rules on the books, but nobody, you know, the academic repercussions. And she says, but nobody uses them, and so, let's just get rid of them. That's what it sounded like to me. They did have them three years ago, and they did use them effectively. I had a kid who graduated three years ago, and he was late, and it danged his grade, and he learned. You know, on March 12th, 2020, we sent our kids home, and then we brought them back. We brought them back. First, we sent them home, and we said, watch Zoom 22 minutes a day or something. We told them it wasn't important. And they came back, and they came back part-time, you know, two days a week, no cameras on, in their bedrooms, didn't have to get out of bed. We told them school wasn't important. Now, my daughter, who just graduated, goes back to school this year, and she'd be sitting in my living room at 20 after 8:00, and I was like, what are you late for now? And she's like, nobody cares, it doesn't matter. And it's a joke. It was literally a joke to her and to her classmates and to her teachers that she was late all the time, and there were no repercussions. And then, like, the last time, one of the last times, she texts me, she says, oh, it doesn't matter, the English teacher didn't show up either. So, again, I don't understand how we tell the kids it's important to be on time and without there being any repercussions, you know. And when teachers not showing up, she routinely had, I'd say, at least two free periods a week because the teachers weren't there.
One minute.
Okay. I'm just getting back to, I think that getting rid of the rules and getting rid of the repercussions is going in the wrong direction. I think we should be going back to having more accountability, more accountability. I think that getting rid of the rules is not preparing our kids for college or for life after school or college.
That's actually, that's a great point. It's a little clarification. One of the, it's not a change in getting rid of consequence. It's shifting the consequence from taking away a student's grade that they earn through their academic work, and instead, it's actually taking away credit that they would earn for their class.
So, I didn't understand that part, actually.
So, you know, and this is technical because I'm a former high school principal, so I lived in this world a lot. Students receive two essentially things from a school when they complete a course. One, they earn a grade, and a grade is a reflection of the academic work that they produce in that class. In addition, they earn course credits as they complete classes, like, we will say a student needs so many credits of English over high school or math. So, if a student exceeds the absence limit in a term in the prior version of what we used to do, they, their grade would drop by three points. So, it doesn't matter if they were an A student, they would now be a B-plus student or something like that.
Right. So, you're saying they would go from getting five credits for math to four credits?
Correct, which over the course of high school, if it's in English or math-
You don't have enough credits to graduate.
Actually, really adds up. And so, it's actually a fairly significant consequence, and then the school actually has to have a process for the kids to be able to recover that credit through additional work. So, and the real distinction is, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be reducing a student's academic grade for disciplinary reasons. The grade is the grade, that's what they earn based on the work they produce. The credit is what the school awards based on meeting all of the other criteria as well.
Okay.
So, it's just shifting the consequence from an academic one to more of a, it's still academic, but it's a, it's a credit-based consequence instead. So, it's nuanced, but it, it's better for kids, to be honest.
Okay.
So, I just want to be clear. The other thing, the high school recognizes that that was an issue this year with attendance and kind of student accountability along with teacher absences and the impact of kids not having class. That's a major initiative they've been planning for all spring to have a new process in place for the fall to really be much more accountable to attendance.
And how soon, how soon will they feel that pain, I guess? Because I, you know what I mean? Like, if, if they can correct course?
Yeah, I don't want to ever call it pain.
Well, if there's repercussion, how soon will they feel it?
The goal the high school has is actually to communicate with families and students much earlier in the process as kids start to miss classes. So, rather than it all of a sudden being at the end of the term, by the way, now you've lost credit, it's, uh-oh, wait a minute, you've now missed a couple of classes, you're on the verge of losing credit, we need to get back on the plan.
Okay. I just think, I think the thing about the accountability and like, they, they need to understand that right away because I think there's so much discipline has been lost and kids, you know, they need discipline. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no further comments, Evelyn, go ahead.
So, I think one of the things I had last meeting was that we wait until the end of the year to tell the kids that they've missed this number of classes. The new thing that is being put in place now is that they would now be addressing this on a quarterly basis.
Correct.
So, to her point, it's going to actually be sooner than we are doing it now so that parents and students know that they're missing classes, they're tardy, and that they're going to have consequences, and that we're addressing it on the front end. And then the school is going to be helping the kids get caught up rather than wait until the end of the year when they're told that, well, you missed this, and now you don't have these grades.
Yeah. And it's, it's really not about punishment. It's actually, the problem is, in the absence of clear rules and expectations and norms, then kids actually can't function effectively, and they really need the consistent approach that staying on top of them on a regular basis requires. Christine.
I don't know if this is the time, but is this also addressing the known midterms and finals in this handbook?
It is not. There's no change to that.
So, they're going to continue to have midterms and finals?
At least for next year, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Rebecca.
Was there also part of it that they checking in with counselors if they'd missed a bunch of classes, which I know for myself would have been huge, that knowing that somebody was there to talk to about it, I think that makes a big difference so you can explain yourself.
Yeah. Attendance is a major focus for the high school for, for next year, so. All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the ABRHS handbook changes. So moved. Can we give it to Ben since he turned his mic on? And did Tessa second that? Okay. But she didn't turn her mic on, which is why I-
Second.
It's already Ben and Tessa. So, all in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? No, that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Up next, there is Superintendent's Annual Summitive Review. So, thank you to all the school committee members who sent in their reviews. At this point, I will read the Superintendent's Summitive Review, and then I'll accept some comments and then a motion to approve it.
This is the best part of being the superintendent.
All right. The 2021-2022 school year is Peter's fourth with our district. Much as we all wanted it to finally be a return to normal year, it was far from it. That being said, Peter continues to impress with versatility, creativity, and empathy. He met the challenges of the year as they evolved and continued to show great stewardship of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. Valuation of a superintendent is a very prescribed process with a clear rubric for reference. The school committee is to assess the superintendent's progress towards the goals agreed upon at the beginning of the cycle. These compromise a professional practice goal, student learning goal, and a district improvement goal. For this year, there are four district improvement goals. In addition to the goal areas, there are four standards by which the superintendent is also to evaluate. In his memo for May 13th, 2022, Peter shared with the committee some highlights and his own reflection for improvements for the past year. Additionally, he shared updates and evidence for each of the six goal, goals areas for this year. It was through this evidence and other material shared throughout the course of the school year that the 11 school committee members individually evaluated Peter's performance for the year. This is a summary of their ratings and comments. Standard one, instructional leadership. Peter received an overall ranking of proficient in the instructional leadership standard. Committee members highlighted the consistent and increasing use of data collection throughout the district to inform teaching decisions. This coupled with the ongoing development of a strong vision for MTSS have and will continue to lead the progress towards equitable outcomes for all students. Another highlight from this year was the report from DESI that Acton-Boxborough led the state in math growth in NCAS testing following the pandemic. The committee is looking forward to continued engagement with the English Language Parent Advisory Council, LPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC, and the DEI Family Advisory to continue to improve outcomes for the populations of, continue to improve outcomes for the populations represented by those groups. The student learning goal for this year included several indicators from the instructional leadership standard. The committee was split between rating this goal as having made significant progress and being met. Additionally, many of the district improvement goals for this year also included focus indicators in the instructional leadership, instructional leadership standard. While the majority of the committee felt Peter met the overall district improvement goals, several rated this goal as only having made significant progress. In his own reflection, Peter identified that we need to limit our goals so as to give a clear focus to our school and district leaders on the most important initiatives. Standard two, management and operations. Peter received an overall ranking of proficient in the management and operations standard. His work as vice chair of the Edco Collaborative at worked towards dissolution was excellent evidence of Peter's ability to manage operations in a challenging situation. He did so while keeping the committee informed of the potential financial liabilities, but at the same time, worked hard to minimize that risk for all member districts. It was suggested that a greater attention be paid to some repeated committee activities that may be executed incorrectly, like the annual budget vote. The committee was split in their assessment of the budget development process. Some thought that more committee time be spent on actionable budget items so as to educate the committee and community of limitations and consequences of budget decisions, while others felt that Peter did well facilitating the process by providing a balanced perspective and avenues for effective communication across multiple personalities. Ultimately, the district and communities passed a school budget that will continue to focus on our key goals. In the area of human resource management, it was observed that while there is still work to be done in hiring and retaining a diverse staff, the intent is right and processes are in place for future success in this area. Peter was commended for the work he has done to build a senior leadership team- for effective communication across multiple personalities. Ultimately, the district and communities passed a school budget that will continue to focus on our key goals. In the area of human resource management, it was observed that while there is still work to be done in hiring and retaining a diverse staff, the intent is right and processes are in place for future success in this area. Peter was commended for the work he has done to build a senior leadership team that is reflective of our values and a mix of new talent and internally developed leaders. Peter was exemplary in his effective advocacy on behalf of the Acton Boxboro staff. He made clear to the committee the immense efforts put forth by the faculty and staff to provide an excellent school year for our students. He clearly sees our professionals and respects what they give. Standard three, family and community engagement. Family and community engagement. Sorry. Peter received an overall ranking of proficient in the family and community engagement standard. Several members mentioned the DEI Family Council as evidence of Peter's work putting families and the community front and center. This is additionally supported by the effort to begin the English Language Parent Advisory Council and the continued support of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Peter takes advantage of multiple opportunities and modalities to connect. He participated in community coffees, provided bi-weekly superintendent updates, and hosted special sharing sessions for concerned community groups. Peter understands when events in our schools require the setting of timely communications, and his messaging is calm and informative. There was a comment that the district communications can be too formal at times, and this may cause some families to disengage. Another comment was that community engagement should be a focus area for the coming year as a method for building consensus and support for the budget. Overall, Peter's engagement style is professional and geared towards identifying solutions that benefit students, families, and the community. The committee is impressed with Peter's capacity for care, his patience, and his flexibility in solution seeking. Standard four, professional culture. Peter received a split ranking of proficient and exemplary in the professional culture, culture standard. Peter's strength as a leader is firmly rooted in his ability to set forth and model an ideal professional culture. He excelled cultivating a shared vision for the district. This is evidenced by his support of the DEI Family Council's work, as well as the joint presentation of the elementary principals this year. Many of the student learning goals for this year required a shared vision across all leaders in the district. These goals are and will continue to be successful due to the culture Peter fosters. Peter has thoughtfully navigated various conflicts through this school year, including a broad range of opinions about masking and the school mascot. He has been able to give voice to different points of views while maintaining a clear position for the school administration. Peter is to be complimented for his grace and respect in managing these difficult situations. Peter obviously cares about coaching, mentorship, and cohorts. This shows in the professional development programs he's invested in and the promotions of internal leaders to key roles in communications and recruitment. This has manifested in vertical teams, cross-building teams, leadership teams, and colleagues of all type who know each other and trust each other. Peter's excellence in the professional culture standard will continue to act as the enabler for his future success. Peter continues to impress with his skill as a superintendent. His ability to navigate the continued challenges of COVID, student dysregulation, staffing shortages, dissolution of the Edco Collaborative, and many other items outside the standard duties of a superintendent are a great example of his abilities and professionalism. He's also seen as a leader among his peers in the superintendent community. The Acton Boxboro Regional School Committee is so pleased to have Peter Light as a leader in our schools, community, and in the Commonwealth. While many members individually shared their vision for growth for the district and Peter specifically, none expressed concerns with Peter's ability to continue to rise and meet the challenge. Overall, the committee rates Superintendent Peter Light as proficient. It should be noted that aside from the proficient ranking, the only other ranking received was exemplary. It is clear that Peter has the trust and respect of both the community and the committee, and we look forward to having him continue to lead the Acton Boxboro Regional School District. Thank you, Peter. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that's found on the agenda?
Move to accept the annual summative review for Superintendent Peter Light dated 6/16/22 as presented.
Seconded.
Ha ha, beat you.
That would be Kira and Tessa seconding it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Okay. Discussion of the superintendent's FY23 salary. So, the committee discussed. I'm just, I'm just looking around the room.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to award Peter annual increase in line with all other administrators in the district, which is 3%.
Second.
Okay. So I'm going to clarify that motion. Thank you, thank you very much, Ginny. So I heard a motion to increase Peter's salary by 3% for a total of $2,000, $244,840. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that was made by Ginny and seconded by Evelyn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or oppositions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, Peter. Would you like to make any comments?
Sure. Thank you, Adam. First, thank you, everyone, for the evaluation. I always appreciate the support. I felt very consistent support from the committee since I got here. You know, I usually try to say this multiple times through the year, but all of the good stuff that you say in that eval is almost always done by other people. And that's really, really, it, it's absolutely important that you understand that, that as the superintendent of schools, there's very few things I actually do, right? It's, it's mostly meeting with other people and helping them work through challenges and, you know, accomplish things on behalf of kids. And so that, you know, my most direct influence is obviously with our senior leadership team and principals, but that extends to all of the staff, every, you know, custodian that we have in the district, everyone who works in a cafeteria, everyone who drives a bus. Really, this is an absolute team effort to do things on behalf of kids. And I know, you know, the superintendent gets the credit, and I also know that when things go badly, the superintendent takes the fall. So I, I get that side of it, too. But I just want to thank all of the staff, you know, educators, leaders in the district for really a fantastic year in what was incredibly, incredibly challenging circumstances. So thank you to everyone. We certainly didn't get done everything we would have loved to do. That's probably a good thing. Because if you get done every, 100% of everything you set out to do, your goals probably weren't high enough. If you can get to about 85% of it, that's probably a good sign. So, thank you very much for all of your support. I appreciate the feedback. I will certainly think about that feedback in terms of setting some of my own professional goals over the course of the next year and be able to come back to you, you know, late summer, early fall with those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. It's been a pleasure working with you this week. Edco update. I know we had a brief oral update from Marie last week. Is there anything else to update there?
Yeah, this will just be very, very quick. So we're just, the only thing we're waiting on right now is word back from the commissioner that he is approving the dissolution of Edco. As I think Marie shared with you, you know, when, you know, now that we're getting close to the final accounting of Edco, it does look, you know, we paid about $100,000 to Edco to close the lease as the Acton Boxboro share. As a result of additional, you know, overpayment of assessments to Edco, we will probably get back between $60,000 and $75,000 once Edco closes. We're anticipating about three quarters of that to come back just after July 1st, which will probably credit the FY22 books. And then the remaining 20% will probably come in either September or October, once the auditors finally do the, the close out of Edco. So, you know, tremendously challenging process. You know, I think the board at the last meeting, you know, just wanted to make sure we recognized and thanked, you know, the staff of Edco over the last 50 years. That is a collaborative that served, you know, hundreds and thousands of students over the course of that time, but also served all sorts of communities really, really well in terms of professional development, professional learning, particular focus on equity and inclusion efforts. And it was a sad thing to have to close the collaborative, but I just want to thank all of my colleagues as superintendents and school committee members who were on the board for all of their work. So, we're anticipating positive word from DESI. Edco has now closed. We've conducted our last board meeting, and we, we believe that, you know, we've, we finished that process.
Great. Thank you. And thanks again for your, your hard work on that. All right. We do need to, as the school committee, vote to change the members of the school building committee. So we have some members of that school building committee who are retiring. We're adding new principals to replace the retiring principals, and a member of the Boxboro Select Board is leaving the committee. So in your packet, there is a updated list of the building committee members, and I will entertain a motion to approve the change of members to the school building committee as presented in our packet.
So moved. Second.
Ginny seconded that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Update from members. I think Health Insurance Trust is the only group that has met since then. Andrew, do you have an update from the HIT?
The Acton Health Insurance Trust met earlier today. Cook and Company presented cash flow loss for FY22 at approximately $1.2 million, plus or minus $100,000. It's about $200,000 higher than the trustees assumed during rate setting. The trust discussed varying levels of risk, likely outcomes, and risk aversion. And note, please, that the cash flow projection was a loss of $1.9 million was much too pessimistic, while the trustee assumption was somewhat optimistic, meaning, of course, that if we expected it to be 1.9 and we are about 1.2, we may be a little better than we thought we'd be. Both numbers are in the range of the expected outcome, so neither one is a terrible projection. Trustees reviewed proposals from multiple vendors regarding reinsurance and voted to move forward with a $175,000 stop-loss insurance level. This was also John Peterson's final meeting, and the thanks and appreciation should be keep upon him for his tireless and indefeable efforts on all our behalf. The next meeting of the trust will be Thursday, September 22nd at 8:15 a.m. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. So very happy to have you on that committee, that trust, and provide a detailed report of the numbers.
Back to you for traffic and weather.
All right. Next item is the recommendation to approve solar and energy storage services agreement, lease option agreement, and lease as presented, and authorize a superintendent to sign them. JD has been standing in the back waiting to give us a two-minute update on what this is about.
So, we'll turn it over to JD, but before we turn it over to him, I just want to say, you know, I need to know how little time we spent this year talking about buses, talking about failed buildings, talking about, you know, all the different problems with how this district operates. We really did not have to spend time on that. And during the pandemic and staffing shortages, that is no small feat. And a lot of kudos to JD, a lot of kudos to Kate, a lot of kudos to that whole team of operations, because operations were a real challenge throughout the entire year. But the buses kept rolling. And so congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. This was no small feat either, to do this type of a lease agreement and to be able to project long-term in the current climate that we're in. So I'll turn it over to JD to say a few words.
I appreciate that. That's very thoughtful. And, I mean, truth be told, in the, in the fall, if we, you know, the school committee didn't come together and authorize some changes to some structures around bus driver salaries and things like that, it was around. So, right back at you. But you have in front of you tonight for consideration, you know, a document that represents 30 years of energy independence for the Boardwalk Campus Building, that 177,000 square foot facility will consume, you know, about 1.4 million kilowatt hours a year. And this agreement in place with our solar provider and battery source provider will cover that need over the next, all through our careers, right? And it'll, it certainly when the building's due for an overhaul in a 30-year period, it will be right in line for updating as well. It's a, it's a very positive event. You know, this building was designed with this model in, in the forefront, you know, thinking about how this would work. It's a little bit convoluted in a way because we're trying to develop something that doesn't exist. You know, so when we started this process two, three years ago and went out to bid for our solar provider, the building wasn't there, the, you know, and you'll see you have an option agreement, you know, to add to the complexities that's tonight for, to lease a parking lot that currently doesn't exist, right? So, a lot of unknowns and hurdles to cover, but it does give us energy independence. It is an economic win. And if there's ever a zombie apocalypse for the next 30 years, this is your building. Yeah. So, yeah.
Thanks, JD. I were prepared-
You are ready.
Oncomings on.
It is designed as misuse.
All right. So there is a recommended motion in the packet. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Can I, can I add just a couple notes first?
Sure.
So this lease has gone back and forth with the attorney multiple times. We also had an energy consultant working on the lease to make sure that we were getting a favorable rate. It's, projecting rates is incredibly challenging in the current environment we're in. But we had to rely heavily on the consultants and heavily on our attorney to make sure that our interests were protected, as well as, you know, getting a good rate, moving, moving this project forward. So I just want to make sure you understand that, you know, the attorneys were heavily, heavily involved in reviewing this and making sure that what we bring forward works. Yeah, never good. Yeah.
Yeah, we certainly didn't do this in a vacuum.
Thank you. It's on the agenda. It's the language, it's on our agenda.
All right. I move that we approve solar and energy storage services agreement, lease option agreement, and lease as presented and authorize a superintendent to sign them.
Second.
This gets the second, she turned her mic on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you, JD.
Thank you all so much.
Have a good night. All right. We don't have consent agenda tonight because we only have one other item to approve, and that is our meeting minutes from 6/9/2022. If everyone's had an opportunity to review those, I'll take a motion to approve them.
Move to approve minutes from?
Six.
6/9/22. Thank you.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is, well, there's one abstention, which would be bad. It was not here. That is still unanimous because an abstention is not an opposition. It's the things you learn. Okay. Last item, we have the statement of warrants and recommendation to approve. As Kira pulls that up, I will just look to Dave briefly to explain as a quick reminder for the committee what it is that we're doing and why we're doing. Dave, two minutes, starting now.
Hopefully less. So you have a, you get a summary of warrants for almost every meeting, and with the understanding that the warrant subcommittee has previously reviewed them and allowed us and authorized us to distribute the checks. So what you're doing tonight is a formal approval of the expenditures as required by Mass General Laws. Mass General Laws also allows a portion of the full committee to, to do just that, to approve distribution of, distribution of checks. So the information that you get is, will be the same, and this is, this is the formal action that's required by Mass General Laws to memorialize the disbursement of public funds.
Thank you, Dave. Kira, would you like to make a motion?
I move that the school committee vote to approve vendor warrant as follows. Number 22025 dated 6/9/2022 in the amount of $616,274.80. And student activities warrant as follows. Number 22025 JH dated 6/9/2022 in the amount of $6,805.4.
Any seconded that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Onto the FY23 Acton Boxboro Regional School District, uh, school committee reorganization. So, as per our regional agreement and policy BDA, our treasurer and school committee secretary are appointed annually. We will first appoint our treasurer. Is there a motion to appoint Margaret Dennehy as the ABRSD treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Andrew seconded that. Tessa moved it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. So, I will ask in a moment for a motion to appoint Beth Petter as the ABRSC secretary clerk. I do want to clarify here that in her duties, Beth will continue to come to our meetings to take the minutes and to then distribute the minutes to the executive secretary for the school committee, who will then be responsible for posting them. That same wonderful, lucky lady will be responsible for gathering the agenda items and posting the agenda. So, we did go through and look and make sure that the duties of the secretary, as we've defined them, are consistent with appointing a secretary slash clerk for the committee. With that, is there a motion to appoint Beth Petter as the ABRSC secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Wow. You got asked on both of those. Ben moved, and Andrew seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Onto the FY23 Any abstentions? That is also unanimous at this point. I will turn it over to Peter Light, who gets to preside over the election of the committee officers.
All right. So meeting adjourned. Oh, sorry. Just kidding. Told you I could get us going quickly. No. So annually, you know, the superintendent takes over for a brief period of time for the chair, and this is the portion of the meeting where we will elect the new chair of the school committee first. So the first thing that will happen, I'll open the floor for nominations, and anyone a member, may nominate a member of the committee to be the chair. Once we receive all nominations, and there are no other nominations coming, we'll close the floor for nominations, and then we will have an opportunity for anyone who's nominated to speak to the nomination first, or withdraw their name from consideration. And then, once that happens, we will have an opportunity to speak to any nominations by committee members, and then at the end, we would call for a roll call vote, and I'll explain the voting procedure once we get to that, that time of the meeting. Okay? So I will open the floor for nominations now. Amy?
I'd like to nominate Kira Wilson Cook for chair.
Second.
Okay, there is no second required, but, yeah. All right. Any, anyone else? Any other nominations?
I nominate Adam Klein. I think it's a good thing to do.
Okay. Any additional nominations? All right, seeing none. I will close the nominations. Kira, you were nominated first, so I'll give you the first opportunity to speak.
I'd like to make a motion to close the nominations.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Kira, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Thank you for nominating me for this position and for the trust all of you have put in me for the last two years. I want to express very deep gratitude to the two Boxborough members who have led this committee for three challenging years. We owe Tessa and Adam our thanks, and we should recognize that when A.B. faced significant challenges, Boxborough members led the way. I believe it's now time for Acton to take on the mantle of leadership again, especially as we face a set of challenging budgeting years as a committee and as a town. It's been my honor to serve the children and families of Acton-Boxborough as a member of the school committee and as vice chair for Acton. I learned a lot in my service as chair of our budget subcommittee under Adam's mentorship, and as a member of the Acton Leadership Group under John Peterson's mentorship. I've spent this past year solidifying strong relationships with members of the Select Board and Finance Committee. I enjoyed learning more about our administration and listening to Actonians and their expectations for the future of our schools. I've spent my year as vice chair learning as much as I can, preparing to step up if called. I pledge to be open-minded and to be accessible to our community, but certainly also to all of you. And I also pledge to meet the challenges we collectively face with as much patience and grace as I can summon. If we, if you trust me with this responsibility, I will strive to carry out its responsibilities with humility and commitment. I will prioritize equity, representation, and consensus building. Regardless of the outcome, I will remain committed to the school committee because it is the right thing for my sons and our communities.
Okay. How would you like to speak?
You'd think after four years. Firstly, thank you to Kira for the nomination. I'm honored to be considered again, and thank you to Kira for, for being next to me through all of these meetings. I am constantly impressed with your thoughtfulness, your passion, and your advocacy. There are probably another dozen superlatives I could throw your way, but I think you've all heard me talk a little bit too much already this evening. As I've shared with many of you before, I'm immensely enjoyed, I immensely enjoyed the role as chair this year. I find it both challenging and rewarding, but I think at this point I'm going to withdraw my nomination because I believe Kira has the backing of the committee, and I think it's her turn. So thank you.
All right. So thank you. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. This is a roll call vote, so I'm actually going to go around the room, and we will go right through everyone. And so this is a weighted vote, and in order for someone to be considered the next chair, they have to have a majority of the weighted vote. So total, Beth and I figured this out today, there's 25 and a half points, so we need to get to 13 to, to get to the new chair. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. So, 12, 12. 12 points. Yeah. Okay. All right. So we have one name up for consideration because Adam withdrew, so we're considering Kira Cook for the chair. So you should tell me who you're voting for. Ben?
I would like to vote for Kira Cook with gratitude as the next school committee chair.
Evelyn?
Kira.
Kira?
Kira Cook. Thank you.
I vote for Kira Cook.
Kira. Kira, because I know what she's getting into, and I know that she can do it.
With a lot of excitement, I'm voting for Kira.
With all caps, voting for Kira.
I'm happy to pledge however many points I represent to Kira.
All right. So that is unanimous. All right. So congratulations, Kira. All right. So we go through the same process now for vice chair. All right. So we have to nominate someone for vice chair for Acton and then someone for Boxborough because Acton comes first in alphabetical order. We'll start with nominations for an Acton member for vice chair.
I nominate Amy Christian Mirth.
I nominate Andrew Schwartz.
Additional nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All in favor of closing nominations? All opposed? All right. So Amy, you were nominated first, so would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Thank you very much, Tessa. So I have been just thinking about this next year and the challenges that we face, and the importance of the ALG process to getting our budgets passed and building relationships, which is something I've done in the past at ALG, and I would very much like to, again, attend ALG as the vice chair to really help us get through this whole budget process that we're facing this next year, as well as all kinds of other, you know, issues. I have served in this role before. I've served as chair before. I do know what I'm getting into, although when I was chair, I did not know what I was getting into, so that's different. But vice chair, I do. And I think this might be my last year, so I'd like to kind of go out with a little bit of responsibility.
Okay. Andrew, would you like to speak?
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for the nomination, Kira. I really appreciate it. I'm humbled by it. And, yeah, I believe that our schools are the center of our community, that of all the things that are happening in this incredible space we live in, the transformation that's occurred inside of Acton over the course of the last 30 years has brought in people from dozens of countries, dozens of religions, dozens of cultures. They all touch here at the schools, and I think that we can build a stronger community through our schools. And I want to be able to use whatever voice I have to do that and do that here. It means we have to have a more embraceable, we have to embrace, rather, the, the culture that we're building. We have to have a more responsible way of looking at, at all of the people here, a more respectful space to be in. I think that comes through in our budgets, that comes through in our policies, that comes through in our hiring, and that comes through in the way that we execute our, our administration. And I want to be a part of this, and I'm thrilled to be a member of the school committee, and I would be honored to sit on the other side of this table with the estimable Kira Cook. And Amy, I think you are fantastic, so it is bittersweet to be nominated against you. Only one of us can. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open the floor for discussion.
I, I'd just like to say that I would love to see Amy serving in this role. I think you have clocked a ton of hours, you have relationships. I think we're in a difficult position, and, you know, I think Andrew's great, but this is going to be a tough year, and your deep knowledge and experience with the budget process and the ALG process, and, again, you know, just your relationships, and your number of years of service on this committee warrant, you know, very careful consideration and, and my support as stepping into this role. I would, I am thrilled that you would volunteer to, to do it, and you definitely are more than qualified, and I would appreciate you having you in this role.
I nominated Amy because I have served on the committee with her for five years, and I've seen her incredible strength in handling and understanding budget issues. The budget is unbelievably complicated, and in my opinion, the hardest part of being on school committee. And not only is Amy incredibly adept at understanding the budget, but she has tremendous relationships outside of the committee amongst community members and those on the FinCom, those on the Select Board, and I think that, that, that's an, it's a really important part, especially as the Acton vice chair, to have those relationships. I think that we have a really green committee in general, and I do think that experience doesn't lie with all that many of us anymore. Our committee has turned over a lot in the last couple of years, and I think that, that we should use that leadership when we have it and that experience, and so that's why I think Amy will be a great choice. And I think Andrew, in the future, I am sure that you will have many opportunities to serve in leadership positions as you are on the committee, but I think this time we need experience.
So I want to echo some of what Tessa just said. I love Andrew, and I would love to see him as vice chair and chair someday, which I think is going to come, but in terms of experience, I, you know, it's, it's taken a lot for me to say this because Amy, I was not a fan of Amy for a very long time when he was, when she was chair. When she was chair, yes. I know, I'm, I'm going to tell the truth, right? Like, when she was chair, we didn't get along at all, and I was living on the school committee, but, you know, as I got to know some of what the chair has to, you know, when you sit in the committee, you have a different perspective of what really goes on, and it's very easy to stand out and judge what is going on and what people are not doing or should be doing, right? And so I, over the last two years that I've been on this committee, I've gained so much respect for you, Amy, and, and some of the work that we have to do, and, you know, when people come to stand by that mic and they criticize us, I was there. I was those people saying, you didn't call me when my kid did this. I, I said those things, and I sit here now, and I realize that it's not an easy task, right? And, but it comes with experience. I remember my first year was a blur to me. It was really foggy, and so I think that Andrew would get there, but what we are, what is in our future? We need somebody that has the experience and, and has settled in and can do the work. And so for those reasons, I completely support Amy in this role, but I will be behind you, Andrew. You have my, my vote next year. 100%.
So I want to provide a different perspective. As someone who's been chair this year, working with, with Kira and Nora as vice chair, and thinking about what does the pipeline of our leadership look like for the school committee? And I, I haven't even decided yet. I still have not decided, but I want to advocate for the fact that when you're looking at this room and you're saying, this is a great candidate, but they don't have experience, the best way to give them experience is to raise them into a leadership position. And so I think as we're all considering who we're going to vote for, the opportunity of putting Andrew in a greater position of leadership helps to build our pipeline for future chair and for future leadership in the committee, which is something that I think we need. I think it's really challenging to sit at this, at the head of this table, at the vice chair or a chair, and have not had experience. And I think it's a thing we need to consider so that the workload of the chair and the vice chair can be more easily spread, and so we can continue to develop our pipeline of leaders. My, one of my largest regrets from this year was not, not having the frame of mind earlier on to bring Kira into some of the decisions and the conversations and the one-on-one meetings that we had with Peter, so that it isn't such a huge shock when you become chair. And I think those who've sat in this chair before me, Amy especially, your first time as chair is, is, there's a lot to learn. There's a, there's a really big step up to, to understand what goes on. And so, you know, I think as Amy knows that, and I think as much as, I think you would do a great job, I also wonder if it would make more sense for the committee as a whole to bring some future talent up so that we build a pipeline of not just future leaders and representatives on the school committee, but future chair.
If I could just ask a question, have you been on the committee for one year? Okay. So I appreciate that, Adam, but I mean, he's, you know, he just finished his first year, so he has plenty of opportunities, you know, and there are plenty of leadership positions other than vice chair. So I appreciate what you're trying to say, but, you know, I, I, I still think that given the budget situation, it, it really is important for, for us to have somebody who has deep knowledge of the budget process and relationships with FinCom and other town boards and leaders. So Andrew has plenty of time, you know, it's his first term, it's only the start of his second year of his first term, so I, you know, I don't disagree with you in principle, but I don't think that that is really an applicable concern at this point to me.
I hear he's got a handful of kids in the district, too, so he's going to be around for a while.
I just want to add a perspective regardless of, of whether it's, it's Amy or Andrew, but I do think that one of the things, having been chair for two years and watched the committee change over the course of everything, I think that one of the places where we have a missed opportunity for growing knowledge is in liaisonships, and it's something that we really haven't focused on a lot because it's not a very glamorous part of being on the school committee, but it is where those relationships are developed. And so I think there are leadership places, leadership opportunities, aside from chair and vice chair, within chairing different things like budget and policy and whatnot, and those are opportunities for those who are still growing their understanding of what we do on school committee. And I have to say, I, I think that all you newbies who have just started, I do think that it's really important to take an opportunity to serve on budget, to take an opportunity to serve on policy.
that one of the things, having been chair for two years and watched the committee change over the course of everything, I think that one of the places where we have a missed opportunity for growing knowledge is in liaisonships, and it's something that we really haven't focused on a lot because it's not a very glamorous part of being on the school committee, but it is where those relationships are developed. And so, I think there are leadership places, leadership opportunities, aside from chair and vice chair, within chairing different things like budget and policy and whatnot, and those are opportunities for those who are still growing their understanding of what we do on school committee. And I have to say, I think that all you newbies who have just started, I do think that it's really important to take an opportunity to serve on budget, to take an opportunity to serve on policy, to take an opportunity to be a liaison. And Boxborough knows this all too well because there's only four of us, so we all have to serve on all the things. But like, it's really important to understand deeply what the FinCom and your community does. And some people know that better than others because they might be married to the chair of the select board in their town, or some of us, you know. But I think that, like, it's really important. I mean, I had no idea about all of the intricacies of town government and the way it works. And I think that, especially with COVID and the fewer opportunities we've had for professional development as committee members, that it's just really, really, really important that those who are here, in order, part of doing the work is going outside of your comfort zone and doing something that you don't know anything about. And I just hope that everyone will take that, that it's a little aside, being vice chair and chair, because those are the things we focus on. We think about, we think about budget, we think about policy, but the way that we grow leaders is that we grow knowledge. And I do think that one of the big jobs of being on the school committee is getting knowledge. And the only way that you can do that is by participating in all the smaller, less glamorous parts of school committee.
I just wanted to say that I really totally agree with what Tessa said. I learnt a lot from sitting on the policy committee, and that's how I grew my knowledge of the school district and the committee and sitting alongside with John on HIT. I did not, you know, I just shadowed him for a whole year, and some of the opinions I didn't make, but just learning about the district and getting involved in some of these things are actually more rewarding than, I think, be chair or vice chair with all the headaches that come with it.
I totally agree with what Tessa was saying about, and Evelyn too, about serving in the less glamorous roles, and certainly that's what I'm going to be pursuing personally. But I also feel very strongly that the argument that somebody doesn't have experience is gatekeeping, and the best way for somebody to really gain that experience would be while somebody who has the experience is still here and available to ask questions of. So, I think it more falls to the experienced person to step aside and make the space and facilitate that learning opportunity for somebody else.
Through the chair to the members of the committee. I shouldn't actually be saying that, that's another thing. What I was going to say is that I think there's plenty of time and opportunity to grow in this position as a member of the school committee. Like Andrew, myself, I just came aboard the past year, and to echo what other colleagues have said, it's been a whirlwind year. It's been a blur. It takes time, it takes effort, it takes a lot of patience to go through and read through the volumes, and I mean volumes, of documentation that come our way. I think in time, Andrew would make a fantastic, and I do mean a fantastic, co-chair representing Acton. But during this period of time of instability or instability and a question of where our finances are going to be next year, I really believe that Amy has the knowledge base, the connections, and above all, the passion and the care to make sure that we are safely guided through this, you know, tempestuous period of time where our finances are going to be tough next year. Whether it's the health insurance trust where our, you know, where those costs are escalating to fuel costs for the buses, we haven't talked about that coming up for next year. Those things matter, and I think with Amy's experience and knowledge base, I would be vote, I will be voting for Amy to serve as the vice chair.
I move the question.
Any other comments on the floor? Okay. So, seeing none, we will do a roll. So, again, you know, there were two candidates. Amy was nominated and Andrew was nominated. When we go around the table with Ben, we'll just go one at a time. Tell me who you are voting for, and if we get someone that gets to the majority of the votes, which Beth will figure out, then that person will be declared winner. If we don't get to a majority on the first round, then we'll open up for another round of comment and another round of voting. All right? So, I will start, Ben.
I cast my vote for Amy.
Amy. Amy.
I love you both very much. I'm going to vote for Andrew because I nominated him.
I'm going to vote for Andrew.
Amy.
Amy.
Andrew.
Amy.
Me.
Seven, five, seven and a half, eight, nine, 10.
Kira, the one.
Yeah. Eight and a half. Yeah, 10 and a half, 10 for, I believe it was 10 for Amy and eight and a half for Andrew. Correct?
Thank goodness Beth is not leaving us next year. No pressure.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. It's going to be a majority of the way. So, that's a majority. Okay, so.
Deb, can we have some illustrative math training for the committee?
Beth, do you agree? 10 and a half for Amy, and that would constitute a majority? And that constitutes a majority of the weighted votes? Yes. Right? Everyone agree?
Yeah. The numbers are already weighted at 10 and a half.
Correct.
And the other number of eight and a half is already weighted. So, 10 and a half is greater than eight and a half.
You're teaching the illustrative math lesson. All right, so Amy would be the vice chair. So, congratulations. We are not done yet.
Thank you. I'm sorry. There's one thing. Thank you, Andrew. I love you. I know that you're going to be great, and I really, and I, but more than anything, I love the discussion that just went around. You know, really, really sharing kind of your thinking. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Amy. All right, so I will now open the floor for nominations for vice chair from Boxborough.
I nominate McKinley.
I move to close nominations.
Are there any other firsts? We should.
I will nominate Evelyn. I will nominate you again.
All right, so right now, we have two nominations on the floor. We have Tessa and Evelyn. Evelyn, when we get to you, you can withdraw if you want, but right now, we have two on the floor. Any other nominations from Boxborough? Andrew nominated Evelyn.
All right.
I'll move to close nominations.
Okay. Second, anyone? Second, I heard, Amy. All right. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, I will turn it over first to Tessa to be able to speak.
I didn't think I would say that I was ever happy or honored to be nominated again, but I would, I would be honored to serve with Kira, who I sat in a coffee shop with a couple of years ago and really worked together to run for school committee. And I think that that would be pretty special. And because, because Tessa has such an unbelievably backwards way of certifying teachers, it looks like I'll be a very lowly paid paraprofessional for yet another year while I pursue my 150 PDPs, so I will have time to be vice chair.
And although it would be cool to have two black women, one as chair and one as vice chair, I would redraw my nomination and let Tessa go for this. I'm here to serve. I really don't care in what capacity I serve this committee. My commitment is to the kids of this district, and I enjoy policy committee. I enjoy so many other things that, there's so many ways to lead than having a title. And so, for those reasons, I withdraw.
Okay. So, there is one candidate remaining, so any other discussion from committee members?
It's just, I can't believe you want to do another tour of duty. I'm deeply grateful. Thank you for, thank you.
I just didn't want it to be me.
I did make a comment about a pipeline of leaders, didn't I?
All right. So, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll. So, again, we'll go around, starting with Ben.
I vote Tessa.
Tessa. Tessa.
Tessa with gratitude.
She stole my line. Tessa with gratitude.
Tessa. 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 Tessa with a hey-hey.
Tessa.
That is unanimous. So, Tessa is elected vice chair from Boxborough. Congratulations.
All right, back to me. FYI, Peter, is there anything in the FYI you'd like to highlight?
I don't know if you heard this, but two, two things. Actually, I'm just going to mention two calendars. One, Monday, we are celebrating Juneteenth as a federal holiday, so we are not in session on Monday, and I don't know if you've heard this from your kids, but Tuesday is our last day of school. And then we return for the summer, so you can...